Selectmen's meeting for Tuesday, April 26. Any announcements? One is, a week from today is Election Day, Town Election Day. And while there are no contested races, townwide races, I do hope folks will vote. There are some contested town meeting races in some of the precincts. I know Precinct 16 has a really hot contested race with something eight or...
Eight for five, yeah.
Eight candidates for five seats. So that should be very, very interesting. And the Board will not be meeting next Tuesday for Election Day. So the next time we're meeting is the 10th of May, at which time we will reorganize the Board. So maybe there'll be some changes, maybe there won't be.
I'd like to nominate Neil, wishing this could...
Yeah, well, that's getting ahead of ourselves.
I was gonna plug two events, but I see the organizer of one in the audience, so I will let him take the credit for the event tomorrow night. But did want to make people aware of open studios this coming weekend. And for additional information and sort of a list of the studios that are open, the artists you can visit, there is a great webpage, BrooklineOpenStudios.com, all one word. And it's a great weekend to celebrate the arts in Brookline and get access and see what people are up to.
Selectmen Green.
Yeah. I'd like to use this announcements period to make a statement regarding a statement from the Commission on Diversity, Inclusion, and Community Relations, which is in the Board packet. And unless someone wants me to read it, I won't read it. But at its meeting held in April, the Commission voted by majority of its members to adopt that statement in response to the reaction to its January 5, 2016 statement on the Board of Selectmen on issues of race and racism in Brookline. The statement, as I said, was passed by majority of the Commission. As the Board of Selectmen's designate to the Commission, I had originally asked them to rescind the original statement. They did not do that. But I think that it's important to say that this statement, the new statement that they have prepared, which is in your packet, is a recognition by the Commission of the consequences of the original statement, which were fairly negative with respect to the town. And I hope it shows that the Commission is willing to play a positive role with the Board of Selectmen and the town in addressing the issues that they see as paramount, which we also see as very important. And that is, those are issues of racism and diversity and equality throughout Brookline. So I think that the Commission's statement, although they didn't do it as I asked, is a very positive step.
Is that statement on a website somewhere?
No, we have not officially received it.
Okay.
I received it through the unapproved minutes of the Commission by the person who actually wrote it, and it's in our packet.
Okay. So I presume once they, once the Commission approves its minutes, it'll get posted on their website. Okay.
But I wanted to make a statement that, you know, this is not what I wanted, but is a positive step forward, and we should encourage further positive steps.
Sure. Anyone have anything else? Okay, we have two folks signed up for public comment. Harvey Brodmann, come join us. Five minutes, please.
Sure. Good evening. My name is Harvey Brodmann. I'm the publisher of BrooklineHub.com, which is a 501(c) nonprofit. And I don't know if that's coming out right. Anyway, I'm here to talk about the Brookline Youth Awards, which are next, tomorrow night, Wednesday, April 27, at 7:00, at the Coolidge Corner Theater, right in the main theater. This is the sixth year that we've put on the Brookline Youth Awards. It features video interviews of outstanding Brookline teens. In order to be eligible, a student needs to either go to school in Brookline or live in Brookline. We have a 15-person nomination committee that reviews essays that are submitted to us. This year, 22 businesses have supported us by sponsoring the event. The town of Brookline is a cosponsor of the event. This year, 12 students will be interviewed, have been interviewed, and their interviews will be shown on the screen. Also, two adults that, who play a pivotal role with Brookline Youth, Dana Brigham of Brookline Booksmith, and Rene Feerman of the Brookline Food Pantry. They will also be honored tomorrow night, and their interviews are really incredible. Rene's really puts an ama, will open a lot of eyes, I think, about the situation at Brookline Food Pantry. 60 young people will be recognized tomorrow night. We've recognized over the last six years, 300 students and eight adults. Catherine Maris, who was a graduate at Brookline High School in 2012, and who now is finishing up a dual degree at Columbia University in New York, and Sciences Pro, it's a university in Paris, France. She's wrapping up a dual degree in human rights, and she will be attending Oxford in the fall. She is coming in tomorrow from New York to give our keynote address. There are also three performances by young people, a slam poet, a violist, and also a singer-songwriter. So we're pretty excited about it. And we've gotten tremendous support and help with this from Brookline High School, Headmaster Deb Holman, the teachers. Brookline Teen Center has been fantastic. Steps to Success has been fantastic. Also, the Department of Inclusion and Diversity in Human Relations, Lloyd Gyllenhaal's department, have been tremendously helpful to us. And Stephanie Orsini of Brookline IT also getting the word out. It's been a real partnership, and really excited about it. The event ends at 9:00. I'll be in bed probably by 10:00.
Well, thank you, Mr. Brodmann. I'm looking forward to it.
I want to, I think we should all thank you and everyone else who worked so hard on this. I think it's a, it's a great opportunity to acknowledge some of the great stuff that young people in town are doing.
Thank you. We get a lot more out of it than we put in. It's, the kids are really amazing.
Yeah. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, we have a second person signed up for public comment, Rick Scaramosa.
Yes, thank you.
Up to five minutes, sir.
Yep, and we'll take that in mind. My name is Rick Scaramosa. Can you hear me?
Yep.
My name is Rick Scaramosa. I live on Rossin Road. I'll thank you very much for your giving me time to speak this evening. I'm here to present two requests. First is to cancel plans to make one-half mile of westbound Beacon Street only traffic lane from Marion Street to Westbourne Terrace to create a dedicated bicycle lane. Again, to not make that, to not eliminate that lane. My second request is that the Town Transportation Board have significantly better oversight and resident input into the Brookline Bicycle Advisory Committee. Let me go to my first point. This lane closure for half a mile westbound on Beacon Street will create a substantial traffic bottleneck on Beacon Street, with cars required to merge into a single lane with backup stretching beyond Coolidge Corner. I think it is clear that this lane closure is only the first step in the Brookline Bicycle Advisory Committee's efforts to make the entire length of Beacon Street one lane with a dedicated bicycle lane. I believe the process of eliminating the westbound lane on Beacon Street has not been properly communicated to the residents of Brookline. Recently, I checked the town website, and there were amendments from only one Brookline Bicycle Advisory Committee meeting in more than six months. The Commonwealth's open meeting law requires minutes to be posted in a timely basis, typically within 10 days. A few days after the marathon, I once again checked the website and noticed that several months' minutes have been posted. However, the last posted minutes are still more than six weeks old. Why are these minutes not posted on the town meeting in a timely manner as required? In addition, there was an article in the TAB in November 2015, reporting how the testing of closing this lane produced a much bigger backup than was anticipated. Also, two weeks ago, at about 10:30 in the morning, there was a minor, there was minor road work westbound on Beacon Street just before Westbourne Terrace. I was personally stuck in that traffic, which backed up all the way to Harbert Street. And this was not during rush hour. Again, this is about 10:30 in the morning. Now let me return to my second point. To have the Transportation Board significantly better oversight and resident input to the Brookline Bicycle Advisory Committee. The mission of the Bicycle Advisory Committee emphasizes the following things: safety, education, and bicycle access. As for bicycle safety, Massachusetts drivers are known as terrible drivers, unfortunately. Bicyclists all over Brookline, and particularly in Coolidge Corner, Washington Square, Brookline Village, and St. Mary's, are consistently more aggressive and dangerous than the car drivers. Driving here tonight, somebody was driving the wrong lane right down Washington Streets just to get here. Too many bicyclists are consistently driving the wrong way on one-way streets, going through red lights, not stopping for pedestrians in crosswalks, not stopping at stop signs, making illegal turns, and not stopping for rice turns. I continue to see no improvement here. What is the Brookline Bicycle Advisory Committee doing to control this safety issue? As for education, they do do bicycle education classes. As for bicycle access, it's clearly evident that the agenda of every bicycle Brookline Advisory Committee meeting is focusing on lobbying efforts to close streets, eliminate traffic lanes, eliminate parking spaces, eliminate parking meters, eliminate substantial meter revenue, create more traffic, and make access to Brookline businesses more difficult. Talking to businesses in Brookline in Washington Square last week, parking is a constant problem. Having more traffic coming into Washington Square from Brookline, from Coolidge Corner is not going to be helpful.
One minute left, sir.
Okay. They'll list, okay, I believe that, okay. Okay. I'm also not even addressing the substantial cost to the town for this. I'm sure you're aware of the problem with Babcock Street last year. And my question is, why did the residents have to come en masse to stop eliminating all of the parking and all of the meters on Babcock Street? And to this day, there's, Babcock residents are unhappy, which they say both in the TAB and in public meetings, but the Brookline Bicycle Advisory Committee is undeterred. They continue to press for large closures on Babcock Street. So in closing, let me summarize my two points. First, to cancel plans to make the nearly half a mile westbound beacon only one traffic lane from Marion Street to Westbourne Terrace to create a dedicated bicycle line, lane, because of the incredible traffic jams this will collect. Second, to request the Town Transportation Board have better oversight of the Brookline Bicycle Advisory Committee returning to the BBC's mission, as stated, safety, education, and access, not constantly lobbying to a never-ending list of extensive, expensive changes for this town.
Okay. Thank you. You can provide your written remarks and they can be...
I have the written remarks. I have copies for the entire, all of the Selectmen.
Yeah, they're going to the minutes.
Do you have any happy questions?
No.
Thank you.
Okay.
I'll send an email copy to everybody in the Board, Selectmen, the town meeting, the Advisory Committee, and I'm going to be here tomorrow night for the advisory board discussion.
Okay. Next item on the agenda is the approval of the minutes. April 19, I had a couple, Selectmen Green had a little, Selectmen Daley.
I had some edits as well.
Okay. If you just, just give it to Kate, and it'll get into the, get into the minutes. All those in favor of the minutes as amended, please say aye. Selectmen Daley.
Aye.
Selectmen Franco.
Aye.
Selectmen Heller.
Aye.
Selectmen Green.
Aye.
And chair votes aye. Next item is a question of approving and executing a memorandum of agreement with motivate international connection with the continuation of services as the town's hubway operator, subject to the terms and conditions of the original agreement, for a second renewal term. Do you want to, or I can, I can address, address it. This is for the continuation of the hubway contract. We have about a year's worth of funding left, and this is to get us through that year. And right now, hubway is going through some rethinking. The four communities are going to be putting out an RFP, a request for proposals, and looking at the model and rethinking the model, thinking more in terms of a model that looks more like perhaps New York or San Francisco, where the, the system is privatized. Because right, right now, the town owns the bikes, and expanding it is, we just don't have the, the scale in, in Brookline to really expand it. And the system, especially in Brookline, needs to be expanded. The other, Boston and Cambridge especially have, have been expanding. They just have a, a bigger scale, and they also have more institutional partners than, than we have available to us. So they've been able to get the funding in a way that we haven't. So this, this, this contract here gets us through, gets us through one more year. So, and questions or comments? Yeah?
I happened to be in New York, this city this past weekend, and it was pointed out to me by a couple of different cousins that the bikeway system there is very, very heavily utilized.
Yes.
And just walking by it, one could see that bikes were coming in and out, and in and out. The one objection is that people don't always have helmets. But I don't know if that's the model that works. I'm, I'm not convinced it's the privatization, but it may be the number of users.
Yeah, what they're looking at is privatization with oversight. And the, the operator would be, would be responsible for obtaining sponsorships, and there would be incentives for them to, to do so. Right now, it's all on us, and we just don't have the staff. Where, you know, Boston has a dedicated person to, to hubway. We just don't have that luxury. So our, our planning department has kind of been filling in Joe Faiola and Andy Martino. They've been doing a great job, but this is one of many duties that they have. So, so they can't really give it the attention it deserves. And we only have four stations, and for the system to work, you, you need a critical mass of stations within, you know, quarter of a mile of each other. Otherwise, it just, it just doesn't work. So we're, we're fortunate in that we, we do have stations, but we also have stations, you know, around our borders. And, and most of, many of the trips that originate in Brookline, and also end in Brookline, either start or end in Boston or Cambridge. So we have a lot of inter-municipality trips, more so than in the other communities. Okay. I will therefore move that we approve and execute a memorandum of agreement with motivate international connection with the continuation of services, as the town's hubway operator, subject to the terms and conditions of the original agreement, executed on May 28, 2012, for second renewal term of one year. All those in favor, please say aye. Selectmen Daley.
Aye.
Selectmen Franco.
Aye.
Selectmen Heller.
Aye.
Selectmen Green.
Aye.
And the chair votes aye. Next item is question of authorizing the chair to execute a 40B technical review assistance application in connection with the Pudding Stone 40B project. Ms. Steinfeld.
Thank you, Alison Steinfeld, Planning Director. I am recommending that the town, specifically the ZBA and the Board of Selectmen jointly apply for a grant for Mass Housing Partnership to hire a 40B consultant for the Pudding Stone project. I will eventually propose that we hire a consultant for each of the 40Bs that will be before us. If we do in fact apply, I fully expect that we will get a grant. It will not exceed $10,000 per project. I'm also told it's unlikely we will get as much as $10,000. But upon receipt of that grant, we may then hire a consultant under, that is provided for us by the state. There's a list of a few consultants, and we would proceed to hire that consultant for Pudding Stone. I anticipate that this consultant would attend perhaps the first two public hearings on Pudding Stone, and subsequently work with the working group that I hope that the ZBA will establish for each of the projects. So if you in fact approve this request and authorize the chairman to sign this, I will go to the ZBA on Thursday night and seek similar authorization.
Questions, comments?
I'm wondering if there are other programs that we can avail ourselves of to get some professional support. We've got a number of these types of projects pending. The planning department is overworked, and I think, I can't think of another municipality that's under the gun like this, that has so many of these types of projects. And it seems reasonable that the state gives us the 40B law and enables developers to come in, assuming a municipality is under 10%, that the state also provides some support when there's a number of projects pending simultaneously.
I did talk to the state about that and encourage them to understand that we were in fact having potentially five, if not more, before us at one time. They sympathize, but didn't feel that it warranted additional funds. The perspective of Mass Housing Partnership is that, once you've gone through at least one 40B, you've, you've developed some expertise in it. So, which is why our first grant was for $15,000, and subsequent grants will not exceed $10,000.
So their reaction is to give us less per project?
Right, because we're good at it. And we will be eligible under 53G, which provides for peer review, to hire peer review consultants with the approval of the developer and at the cost, and at, at the cost of the developer. So I would anticipate we would hire peer reviewers for certainly traffic, and for urban design, and depending on the project, stormwater. And that will be discussed eventually with the town engineer, as to whether or not he would feel that peer review is necessary for stormwater.
So if we want to hire any, anything else, it's on our dime?
Correct.
Okay. Lovely. Okay. Any other questions or comments?
Well, no, I, I mean, I certainly think we need to seek this $10,000.
Oh, yeah.
I think as, I join my fellow Selectmen in thinking that the state is imposing lots of burdens on us without much help.
An unfunded mandate.
Maybe I'll talk to somebody I know in the Division of Local Services.
Therefore, I'll move that we authorize the chair to execute a 40B, Chapter 40B Technical Review Assistance Application in connection with the Pudding Stone 40B project. All those in favor, please say aye. Selectmen Daley.
Aye.
Selectmen Franco.
Aye.
Selectmen Heller.
Aye.
Selectmen Green.
Aye.
And the chair votes aye. Next item is the question of awarding, executing contract roadway improvements at various locations in the amount of $1,471,527.49 with Aggregate Industries of Saugus. Mr. Ditto.
Good evening. On March 31, the Department of Public Works opened bids for reconstruction of roadway improvements at various streets. We had four bidders, and Aggregate Industry was the low bidder. Second bidder was La Russa Corporation, and third bidder was Newport Construction. These are all companies that have worked in town and are familiar with our procedures. The scope of work on this project is as follows. We will mill and overlay Elliott Street and South Street. We will reclaim Clyde Street, and we will overlay Newton Street from Harsh Game Circle to the town line. There'll also be selective curb and sidewalk work done on each one of these streets. The funding for this project is from the state, Chapter 90 funds, which is fully reimbursable. We have had this project cleared by the state, so if you vote to move forward with this project, we will issue the notice of receipt tomorrow, and probably start within the next several weeks.
Questions or comments? Selectmen Daley.
I thought, when I saw Clyde and Newton on there, I thought we had done one of those not too long ago. Or was it Lee that we did?
We did Lee Street from Newton Street to Route 9.
Okay, so Clyde and Newton haven't been done though.
Right, correct.
Selectmen Heller.
Mr. Ditto, my usual question, gas leaks.
Yes.
Are there any on these streets?
We had sat down with the gas company, presented these streets to them, and said, have you got any problems? You need to get in there right now. They didn't identify Clyde Street as a street that they want to give some attention to. So they will be in there within the next two, three weeks.
So they will do that before this work commences?
Right.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, I will move that we auth, that we award and execute a contract roadway improvements at various locations in the amount of $1,471,527.49 with Aggregate Industries, Northeast Region of Saugus. All those in favor, please say aye. Selectmen Daley.
Aye.
Selectmen Franco.
Aye.
Selectmen Heller.
Aye.
Selectmen Green.
Aye.
Chair votes aye.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Ditto. And now we have a bunch of temporary licenses, which I will take a motion, I'll propose a motion in omnibus fashion. This is going to be a fair amount of reading, so hang, hang with me. I will move that we grant a temporary permit to sell all kinds of alcoholic beverages on town property to Lars Anderson Auto Museum in connection with the following events, to be held at 15 Newton Street, an exhibit opening, all kinds alcohol for May 5, from 5:30 to 11, beer and wine, corporate reception, May 6, from 5:30 to 9:30. I will also move that we grant temporary wine and malt beverage license to Pierce School PTO in connection with the following events, to be held at 50 School Street, a PTO fundraiser March 14, 2016, from seven, from May, May 14, thank you, someone's listening, from 7:00 to 10:30, a function for Piper Smith Mumford, May 25, 2016, from 7:00 to 10:00. I will move that we grant temporary wine and malt beverage license to Brookline Interactive Group in connection with a member event to take place on May 19, from 6:00 to 9:00 at 46 Tappan Street. I will also move that we grant temporary alcoholic beverage license to Pine Manor College in connection with the following events, to be held at 4,400 Heath Street, all kinds alcohol for Herschel Dinner, May 27, 7:00 to 11:00, a wedding, June 11, from 6:00 to 11, a wedding September 10, 6:00 to 11, wine and malt beverage, a wedding June 5, 5:30 to 10:30, and a wedding August 28, 2016, from 2:30 to 5:30. I've reviewed all of the applications, and the police department approves them. They appear to be in order. All those in favor of all those applications, please say aye. Selectmen Daley.
Aye.
Selectmen Franco.
Aye.
Selectmen Heller.
Aye.
Selectmen Green.
Aye.
And chair votes aye. And last item on our miscellaneous calendars, question of authorizing town administrator to execute an electricity supply contract on or about May 4. Mr. Kleckner.
I'm going to ask Mr. Faizan, Assistant Town Administrator, to address this topic, please.
Good evening.
Mr. Faizan.
Austin Faizan, Assistant Town Administrator. So, the simplest way to present this question is that there are two factors in electricity bill, how the town's charge. There's the capacity charge, and there is the supply charge. So the supply is the bill that we would get from National Grid capacities, a bill that we get from TransCanada right now. As of right now, because of the changes to the solar legislation that just went through, it has a ripple effect... it has a ripple effect that will impact our rates, and our consultant has recommended that we go out to bid and lock in a favorable rate so that we are protected until 2021. Currently, our rate is locked in until 2018. Beyond that, this is basically a procedural matter that needs quick action on, because we need to get the bid out next week, and we need to have something signed by May 8th, actually. So, couldn't bring this up next week.
Selectman Franco?
So I'm, I'm reading in the memo that was in our packet that the potential exposure is $64,000 a year if we don't do this?
Yes.
Selectman Daly?
Yeah, I'm, I'm just, was a little confused by, by some of the, what's going on, trying to figure out. And the, where you were talking about the embedded cost of solar carve-out charges and electric supply rates, what, what are we talking about there?
So, the adding on the solar that the legislation just did, what that did is that allowed individual homeowners to apply for a solar tax credit if they were to install solar panels on their roof and things like that. That has ripple effects into the entire electric industry, electricity industry in Massachusetts, because they essentially don't just eat that cost. That cost is bore out across the system. So...
We have solar panels on a lot of our town roofs, so...
Not, not yet. We only have them on a few, that, we're looking at the solar panel, panels on town roofs in the Carport project and stuff like that. This is, this is different than that. That project is still going forward, and they're still determining the best sites for that. But this is just for our electricity rates that we pay for all of our buildings that we maintain, and we, we basically have this contract right now with TransCanada. As of right now, we pay, the exact number is seven point, 7.57 cents per kilowatt hour we're paying. And that's a capacity charge based off in ISO administered capacity auction. That happens three years ahead of time. So, right now, if we don't take action after 2018, we are going to bear the brunt of significant exposure to the tune of $64,000 or significantly more than that in years out. So, this protects us for three more years. But again, action needs to happen pretty quickly on it.
I'm, I'm confused about, about this, because, you know, if we do go to an aggregation program next year, I don't know how our position within that program would be affected.
I, I can speak to that. So, the town, as an entity ourselves, when we're negotiating for electricity rates, we want the lowest rate. We want to pay the least amount possible. Community aggregation has a different goal than that. That's looking for the best mix with renewable energies and things like that. And since that whole process hasn't been really fleshed out to this point, and we haven't determined what the mix is going to be and what the potential impacts would be, that is more community focused, and this is town building focused.
Yeah, I do, I do think the municipalities should also adopt goals which promote climate change, you know, climate action. And so, is, in the event that we want to ensure that our, the municipal supply is, has a significant mix of renewable energy, would that be possible under this contract?
We would have to bid that out again.
So this locks it in for three years?
It locks in the rate, but not us...
It locks in this capacity rate. But this most likely would have to be bid out again in doing, pursuing community aggregation.
But a favorable vote in, on this motion...
Does not prevent that from happening at all. Yes.
Okay.
Okay. So I will move that we authorize the town administrator to execute an electricity supply contract on or about May 4th, 2016. All those in favor, Selectman Daly?
Aye.
Selectman Franco?
Aye.
Selectman Heller?
Aye.
Selectman Green?
Aye.
Chair votes aye.
Thank you.
Thank you. Moving on to our main calendar, Mr. Dempsey is going to update us on the upcoming Ninth Annual Brookline Bikes Beacon Bike Parade scheduled for May 22nd.
I'm John Dempsey. I'm on the Bicycle Advisory Committee, and we, I'm here to seek your blessing for the Ninth Annual Bicycle Parade down Beacon Street, to invite your participation. And I always have a little sweetener in here. The sweetener this year is, you can get on a bike somewhere along eastbound Beacon Street with that west wind at your back, all downhill, and join the second half of the bike parade, and you'll love it. Okay? We're making it real easy. No Beacon Street hill for you.
And why do you think we couldn't have?
Well, I'm, I'm just offering it. I'm not trying to say anything beyond, I'm offering that. So I hope you can participate.
Are you fixing our knees at the same time?
I'm sorry?
It's all right.
I also want to call attention to our wonderful sponsors, Chobe Hoy and Brookline Bank have sponsored this from the very beginning, all nine years. And we now have a new bike shop in town called My Bike over on Boylston Street that you might not know about.
Yeah, where are they?
And we're very happy. We have competition in town on bike shops. Landry's, of course, is the mega store, and now My Bike over on Boylston Street, right at the intersection with Cypress. And...
Really?
Yep. So, I'm glad that, I'm glad I'm here to tell you about that.
Thank you.
We also, Urban Adventurers Downtown Boston Bike Shop has been a supporter since the very beginning. And this year, Jeff Ferris at Ferris Wheels in Jamaica Plain is coming over to offer support. In addition, we have the support, the wonderful support of the Police Department, the Parks and Open Space, Highway and Recreation. So it's a great event. Hope you can come. Even if you don't ride a bike, you get a popsicle or an ice cream sandwich at the end.
That's the sweetener.
That's, that's, that's what I offered last year, though. So, I have to sweeten it a little differently. So if there are no questions, and...
Yeah, I, I, I was there last year, and it was a lot of fun.
Yeah, it forced me to look for my bike, pull it out of storage, and use some Z40 on it.
Yeah, good. Well, you can take it from my bike. It's almost in your neighborhood.
I have a, an, sort of an operational question. I believe last year was the first time we did sort of a rolling stop along Beacon Street, rather than shutting the entire road down for...
No, we always do rolling, rolling. It's, ever since the very beginning, we've done rolling road closures at the intersections.
Okay.
So Beacon Street traffic keeps moving at a slow pace, though. The intersecting streets stop, it takes about 10 minutes for that, for 500, 600 bicyclists to go through an intersection.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Dempsey.
Okay, well, thank you very much for the opportunity. Hope to see you on May 22nd.
Yes, thank you. The next item on the agenda is an Arbor Day proclamation. Mr. Brady, you going to tell us about Arbor Day in the town of Brooklyn?
I am indeed. Mr. Chairman, members of the board, I thank you for hearing me this evening. So, we have a little bit of a spread in terms of a timeline. Spring is trying. It really is trying. It's 30 degrees today. It's going to get real frosty tonight, but we're, we're almost there, I think. The official Arbor Day for the state is on Friday, which is April 29th. We traditionally move our day around a little bit, which we have the option to do, to make it work for scheduling and such things. And so, we have two items going on this year. The first of which I'm going to speak to you about is not in the memo, and that is, on Arbor Day itself, we will be partnering with the City of Boston and many members of the Massachusetts Arborst Association in doing extensive tree work, pruning on our side, on, in the Riverway, really between Longwood Avenue and Park Drive. It's an interesting event, but not a whole lot of opportunity frankly for our public participation, because it's a work zone. So I invite folks to come take a peek. It will be of great benefit to the canopy down there, and it's a nice event for Arbor Day to get everyone out. It's a completely volunteer effort, so it's nice for the, for the businesses which work in community quite, in our community quite a bit to give back. The second event we're going to plan for, and your memo says next Thursday, and as you all understand, with schools, sometimes schedules are modified. And that is now shifted up one day to Wednesday, on the 4th. And we're going to do, be doing a very nice event, and that's at Dane Park down on Hammond Street. It's a cooperative effort. It's going to start with some invasive plant management to try and keep the whole area healthy. A little bit of trail work, because the, the fifth graders have a great time with that. And then we're going to finish off the day planting two native Fraser firs in Dane Park to encourage some diversity, improve the canopy. And it's a generous quap of effort with the Friends of Dane Park. So, those are the two main events we're having for Arbor Day. And also attached for your consideration is the proclamation for Arbor Day, which designates Brookline's specific date. It's a, it's an important recognition. This is closing down on my 15th year with the community. I was thrilled to be able to get the opportunity 15 years ago. I'm still thrilled when I come into work every day. It's a great community. Trees are part of the fabric here. The urban forest is recognized, and I, I love my job, and I'm very grateful for the support that the citizens and folks at town meeting and yourselves give our programs. So I ask for your consideration for the Arbor Day proclamation, and would be happy to answer any questions.
I think it's fitting that this proclamation should come before us tonight, which is Frederick La Umstead's birthday, I believe.
It is, indeed.
Sort of the, the father of, of much of the parkland in Brooklyn, or I should say a healthy portion of it, so...
Well, I, I, was it last year that I came to the Rose Garden Park?
Yes.
When we were planting a tree. I think it's actually called Dexter Park, the play area. But it was great, because there were a lot of preschoolers there, and they were thrilled to, to join you in helping to plant the trees. So that was a wonderful event.
We love to have the support from the young ones. It makes the day.
Okay. Any other questions or comments? Therefore, I will move that we adopt the proclamation which designates May 5th as Arbor Day in Brookline. All those in favor, please say aye. Selectman Daly?
Aye.
Selectman Franco?
Aye.
Selectman Heller?
Aye.
Selectman Green?
Aye.
And the chair votes aye.
Aye, thank you for your thought.
Thank you very much, Mr. Brady. We're going to be not talking about item seven, the Bottled Water Committee Charge tonight. We're not going to be modifying the charge. The next item is...
Uh, hang on one second. Is there...
Next item is the All Kinds Alcoholic Beverage Change and Manager. And this is a continued review of the application of Sahib Group, doing business as Shana Punjab Mandi Sanju, President, holder of an All Kinds Alcoholic Beverage License as a common vichular at 455 Harvard Street for Change and Manager, as follows, from Girmuk Singh to Manju Khoshal.
Hi, good afternoon to all of you.
Introduce yourself, and...
Hi, my name is Manju Khoshal, and I am going to be the new manager to the location of Shana Punjab.
Okay.
With your blessings, if I get it.
We heard something about this last week, but you were unable...
Unfortunately, I was traveling, and I was out of the state. That's why.
So, let me just ask you, what do you know about our, our liquor laws? What, what's your understanding of what your obligations are as the manager?
First of all, I am tip certified. I took the classes, and I do currently run a Quincy location that we have in Quincy. And same thing, checking the IDs, making sure, because this particular location is around the colleges, so a lot of students comes. So we are on top of everybody's IDs, and the validation to it, and all sets of, like, bringing in their underage friends and all that, so we do, I do observe all that. And then the limitations and all the laws that we fall not to serve more than what they should, and offer food and everything, obviously, because we are the, the food chain. So, just main things, so we don't mistake, mistakenly give somebody that we're not supposed to.
And, and do, do you know about the record-keeping obligation?
Yes, we do have a folder. If there is a need, we do, you know, write down everything, and we try to keep everything on that file.
Okay.
You, you mentioned that you, you're the manager of record for a license in Quincy?
Indeed.
Yep. And you know that, are there, do you know if there are alternate managers on this license, or is it just you alone?
He's the one.
Okay. So you know that one of, the two of you has to be on site at all times?
Yes, usually you will find one of us.
And I will give you the, the warning that we give everybody, that the, the Brookline Police do conduct stings, and they bring in a co-op student from Northeastern that looks like they're 21, but really isn't. So, be on, be on guard. We don't want to see you again here.
Perfect, thank you. Thank you for the heads up.
Okay. Any other questions? Thank you for the questions, and keeping me honest.
And, and this application will be contingent on receiving the fingerprints back.
Okay, so I will move that we approve the application of Sahib Group, doing business of, as Shana Punjab Mandi Sanju, President, holder of an All Kinds Alcoholic Beverage License, as a common vichular, 455 Harvard Street for Change and Manager, as follows, from Girmuk Singh to Manju Khoshal. And this will be conditioned upon successful completion of the fingerprint check. All those in favor, please say aye. Selectman Daly?
Aye.
Selectman Franco?
Aye.
Selectman Heller?
Aye.
Selectman Green?
Aye.
And the chair votes aye.
Thank you very much, and thank you for the advice.
Sure.
Bye, goodnight.
The next item, do you want to talk about it a little, a little?
Sure, I'll, I'll introduce it. We have two cable television licenses. These are licenses that are governed through Massachusetts law, and the Board of Selectmen is the licensing, issuing authority under these licenses. We have been negotiating with Comcast, which is the latest license that is, is due. I believe it expires at the end of this month. And despite our good faith efforts, it's, it takes a long time to do this. And so, as a procedural matter, the process, as advised by our telecommunications counsel, is to, for the board to vote, to, to actually do a preliminary assessment of denial, it's called. We are assured it will not affect any service whatsoever. In fact, Comcast has all of the interests in keeping service to its existing clients. But this must happen before the end of April, and so here we are.
So this basically just preserves our rights and allows us to continue negotiating and finish this up. Hopefully, it'll happen in the next month or two, but we just need that extra time.
Okay, if my internet goes out, I'm going to come back.
Comcast is very aware of this, and they're supportive of it. They understand the need to take some sort of a preliminary vote prior to the end of the contracts, or the, the end of the license.
Yeah, we, we talked about, we talked about this with them extensively, so they're, they're aware. So...
Are there any really difficult issues, or are these just questions of figuring out how to articulate?
It's all about money. It's all about money. Yep. Usual, as usual, yeah.
Yeah, and if they say it's not about money, it's about money. So, here's the motion that I will propose for us. The Board of Selectmen, in its role as statutory issuing authority for the town of Brookline, is hereby issuing a preliminary assessment of denial of Comcast of California, Massachusetts, Michigan, and Utah LLC's cable television renewal proposal to the town of Brookline dated December 29th, 2015. The Board of Selectmen will issue a written statement of reasons in accordance with 207 CMR 3 dot 6, paren 3, detailing, detailing the reasons for its preliminary assessment of denial. So that's the motion. All those in favor, please say aye. Selectman Daly?
Aye.
Selectman Franco?
Aye.
Selectman Heller?
Aye.
Selectman Green?
Aye.
And the chair votes aye. Thank you. Next item is an exciting item for, I know, me, and at least for Selectman Heller, who've been involved, well, Selectman Heller more now, me originally, in the community choice aggregation. And, and this is a question of adopting the Climate Action Committee's Subcommittee and Community Choice Aggregation's recommendation... Choice Aggregation's recommendation that the Board of Selectmen subscribe to the Metropolitan Area Planning Council's aggregation procurement program and enter into an agreement with the MAPC's selected energy broker, Good Energy. Mr. Loewy, welcome.
Neil, before Warner gets started, I'd just like to say a couple of quick things. One is to keep in mind, one is that, first of all, the community, the Climate Action Committee appointed subgroup to work on this issue because we were worried about its moving ahead. They have done phenomenal job. I want to thank them. There were five members. Warner Loewy's been the chair, David Lescoyer, Kathleen Scanlon, Don Weitzman, and Alan Leviton. In addition, they were joined by Tommy Vitolo, who provided, he was the petitioner, as you recall. He provided a lot of his own expertise, as well as Ed Leckler, town meeting member from precinct day. Also, we were fortunate enough to have Maria Morelli as the staff person assigned to the committee, and she's done a phenomenal job as well. So I want to thank them all for stepping into what was really a void and bringing it up to speed. Let me just say one quick thing about overview of this. That is to keep in mind that there's a major advantage to doing what the committee is recommending, and that is, the advantage is, if there aren't any disadvantages. That makes sense. We, you know, we're entering into a process, but we don't, if at any point down the line we don't like it, if something we're not comfortable with, we don't have to go forward. So we're not putting out for any funds or anything of that nature. And I think that that is a very important aspect. And with that, I'm going to ask Warner to explain it in more detail.
Mr. Loewy, welcome.
Thank you very much, both of you. And Mr. Ruschinski, exactly what I was going to say, we're very excited to be moving forward with this community choice aggregation. And Selectman Heller did an excellent job of introducing, the people have been working on it. Maria Morelli, in particular, has been doing a great job, particularly when we have to move this very quickly, just a great job in turning out a lot of work to, as you can see in front of you. The other people I'd like to introduce here tonight, too, is that we also have Patrick Roach, who's here from the MAPC, who has been working with this whole program at MAPC with a number of communities. And we also have Philip Carr, who's of Good Energy, which is the consulting firm that we're going to work with, and Tom Michaelman, who is with Sustainable Energy Advantage, which is a group, I'll say a little more about later, but is working with Good Energy as well. So I'm going to try to keep, you know, it's a pretty complicated area. I mean, I think all of you already know a good bit about it, and you could talk about it forever. I'm going to try to give a short summary, and then if you have any questions, I'll answer what I can, but that lots of backup. So first of all, as I say, as you, I'm sure you know that community choice aggregation takes advantage of the 20-year-old state law that allows the town to negotiate for better electricity supply for all its residents. And it was the subject of two Warren articles last fall, one of which you all proposed, and Tommy Vitolo, who's one of the key people in helping us with some of the technical things, because of his professional expertise, was one of the proponents of the other. So both of those passed overwhelmingly, and we're now moving forward as quickly as we can to implement them. And of course, a major component of this is that we hope to end up with a new source of electricity for all the residents of the town that's about 50% renewable energy. The process by which the town chooses a new source is very highly regulated and complicated, but those are good things, if for no other reason. I guess the primary reason, really, is that they provide a lot of protections, not only for the town, but for the consumer, for the residents as well. So tonight, we're really beginning an eight-month-long process to, that will hopefully, hopefully at the end of eight months, we will submit a plan to the Department of Energy Resources and the Department of Public Utilities. And once the DPU approves it, we can go out to bid, as I say, and we hope to be able to have a new energy supply available on January 1st. And of course, during that process, as I say, it's a somewhat long process, there'll be a number of opportunities where both you as the Board of Selectmen and the public get to review the work that's going on, in particular, the plan we submit. It's first submitted in draft to DOER, and then, and there'll be a chance to review, and there'll be public meetings and so on, and then it's submitted more formally to DPU. The reason to say we're moving quite quickly at this point, because we really very much want to take advantage of the fact that there's a rate change, ever-source rate change on January 1st. So the review time with these state agencies is somewhat extensive, and there's a lot of work to be done. So that's what we're trying to do at this point, is to get this together by January 1st. And as I said, between now and then, there's a lot of public education needs to do, and that needs to be done, particularly around the issue of making sure that everybody knows that even though we think it's a great thing, they don't have to, they can opt out. There's a lot, there's a very clear opportunity to opt out, and we'll do a lot of public education around that, so any consumer that isn't comfortable with it can opt out. Now, as I say, that's just sort of skimming the surface on all the complexities, but even from that, it's clear that if, this would be quite an undertaking if we were to do it all entirely by ourselves. But luckily, MAPC has done a multi-community procurement, and so the reason it's a little bit of a rush is we're kind of in on the end of that, and they received three proposals from, proposals from three organizations in the states, really only our three organizations that are prepared to do this kind of work in Massachusetts. And they did a detailed procurement process, and interviews, and analysis, and everything, and they chose Good Energy, which is represented tonight by Philip Carr. And our subcommittee that Nancy described, basically, we certainly didn't try to redo all that work, but we looked through that work, we did some of our own analysis of some of these things. Good Energy, as I say, who was chosen among the three by MAPC, they clearly have quite a good deal of experience, so they've worked with 200 communities, not so many in Massachusetts yet, but more in the Midwest. But they started working a year ago with the city of Melrose. So Kathleen Scanlon, who's on our subcommittee, talked in detail with the Energy Efficiency Manager there, and who spoke very well of them, particularly with regard to consumer issues. So her notes of her work are in the materials, as are some other things. Alan Leviton did some analysis, Ed Leckler, who's sort of a volunteer member that's been involved in this, did some work. You can see all that in the materials. So as I say, and MAPC and we both were impressed particularly with Good Energy's focus on educating residents and consumer service. So, and in addition, they're working with SEA, which is the organization that actually has been engaged by the Department of Energy Resources to develop the new SREC program. So they're a highly recommended organization as well. And in addition, I think a number of us in this community have had experience for a number of years with Mass Energy, that is, Mass Energy Consumers Alliance. And the Good Energy has a relationship with them, not an exclusive relationship, but they intend to work with them closely as well. So that's something else that we feel is definitely a positive. So with all that, I mean, the other thing I should say is, we're asking you to enter into a contract, we're recommending you enter into a contract with them. It's been reviewed by town council, and unlike a lot of contracts, there's basically no risk to the town or its residents, that we pay nothing in advance, we can withdraw at any time. So it's something that we hope, we hope you will approve. The bottom line is, we have a great opportunity here, really, but we do need to move quickly. So we'd ask you to begin this process by, you know, vote to begin the process, and both sign the subscription agreement that gets us in with the other communities that are working with MAPC, and the consultant services agreement with Good Energy, so that we can start working with them to move this all forward.
Selectman Daley.
Yeah. I wonder if anyone can tell me, sort of roughly, ballpark, what is going to be the cost to a household in Brookline, say, we'll say a household of four people, versus what they would be paying under more traditional...
That's one of the key questions. And the, basically, the proponents of the bylaw did a lot of work in preparation for bringing the bylaw forward, because we, say, they, I wasn't so much involved in that, felt it was important to start this off on the right foot. And so Tommy Vitolo did a lot of analysis, Ed Leckler, who had done a lot of work with Climate Action Brookline in signing people up for N-Star Green, which, you know, is no longer in effect, but in some ways, you know, N-Star Green is kind of a similar, was a similar program that allowed you to do, individuals to do the same thing through, through what used to be N-Stars now, whatever they are now.
EverSource.
EverSource. And what, a lot of us were involved in that process, and what we learned there was that people are willing to pay a little extra, but they're not willing to pay a lot extra. And the sweet spot seemed to be in the area somewhere between $5 and $10 a month, and that's what we're continuing to be shooting at. That's what was suggested, that's what town meeting voted in favor of, people in town meeting voted overwhelmingly, so there was a sense there that, people seem to hear that as reasonable. And it's also, I mean, again, that's what we're shooting for, that, you know, there will continue to be some discussion on this as we go forward.
Don't they have actual experience in Melrose, or is that...
Well, it's still kind of new there. I think, first of all, I think experience nationwide is that generally, people, there's a, perhaps, perhaps the addition isn't quite as big as we're asking for. I think in Melrose, it may be more like $1.50 extra a month.
Well, it's 5%, I believe, and we're asking for 25%.
Yeah, they're...
In terms of power, 25% no.
Most communities are being less aggressive in terms of what they're asking for green energy.
How much they want of the green?
And therefore, they're paying a little less.
Okay.
And maybe, that sounds a little too pro-rata, but I think they're paying, I think, I think it may be that Melrose is paying something like $1.50 more a month. Does that sound about right? And it doesn't seem to have been a problem. I think around the country, the tendency is that maybe around 10%, as many as 15% of people will opt out of a program like this. Who knows why? Some people just, you know, just want to stay with their old-fashioned energy. But that's, that's a general idea, and again, we're going to keep looking at it.
Selectman Franco.
I've got a couple of questions, but I'll ask my first one, and then let everybody else take their crack at getting some more information and having their questions addressed. So I want to hone in on the question of cost, but from sort of a different perspective than Selectman Daley. My impression is that the way that Good Energy is getting paid here is through a surcharge, a small surcharge on households that don't opt out, that continue to have this service. And it looks like it's 1/10,000th of a cent for every kilowatt hour.
It's actually 1/10th of a cent.
1/10th of a cent. Okay.
And if I give you a quick number, I mean, I thought about it in terms of myself, I use about 400 kilowatt hours a month. That's maybe a little less, probably typical is more like 500, but that would mean, therefore, that I would be basically paying them 40 cents a month on a $100 bill.
Yeah. So is that a charge that's going to exist in perpetuity, or is there a finite period?
No, that will exist as long as we continue a relationship with them, so it could be in perpetuity.
Okay. And there...
Could be renegotiated conceivably, too.
And Good Energy is bearing the risk if we decide to, we don't like the mix that they come back with, or the cost that would be, could be imposed on households in addition to their current electric bill?
Right. They don't start collecting that fee until the electricity starts flowing under a new program.
Okay. I've got other questions, but...
Go, go.
Hold my...
Do it. Go.
So this contract, this agreement seems to be silent on the power mix that we talked about at town meeting in the spring. My recollection, and I'm sure Dr. Vitolo is going to correct me if I'm wrong, he's going to spring out of the seat and rush to the podium, was that we've sort of talked about 25% renewable being incorporated, or $7 per household, whichever we could sort of get. Is that still the goal here?
Yes, pretty much. I mean, it's both of them. Basically, the way the thing works is, there's already, so I think it's, in the energy mix we get already, there is this state renewable portfolio standard, requires all utilities to have a certain amount of renewables. I believe that's about 11% right now. And then something 12, 13, 14%, there's a certain amount already that's hydro, which, you know, some people can debate about a little bit, but it's renewable. If you put those together, we're already at about 25%. So the plan, as presented at the town meeting, that we're continuing to go forward with, is that in addition to that 25%, we'd add another 25% of electricity. And again, not just green energy, we want to be very sure, we don't want to just get green energy from a wind farm in Oklahoma, where it's really, where it's not adding so much to the addressing climate change problems on, but that actually, that it's tied to new generation in New England. And you can get that, additional 25% of that sort of energy at a cost we hope of $7 per month. And I keep saying that, actually, in our very preliminary discussions with Good Energy, they think that we may be able to do better than that. And because, first of all, we weren't, when we put the town meeting Warren article together, we hadn't looked into this thing about joining up with other towns. Again, it's really kind of premature to know what's going to happen, but we're, I'm hoping, I think we're giving a $7 figure as a high figure. We're hoping to bring it down, because we may just go alone, depends on, you know, Good Energy will help us, and they may, depending on what we, how the market works, as we get into it, it may be that we'll go alone, or we may sort of be bidding with other communities and bringing the price down even further.
So one of our advantages of going with MAPC, we already belong, but, you know, we are partnering with other communities, so there's more bargaining power there. We're a small, really, we're a small potato in many, compared to many others, but being, joining with others gives us more leverage, really.
You have more?
I have one more question. So we talked a little bit about the 10th of a cent surcharge. In this scope of work, the service agreement, there's mention of some help being provided to inform the public when we're ready to roll out a program. And things like a mail campaign, and local radio and TV spots, and cable access programming are mentioned amongst other things. I'm wondering how we're paying for all of that. Is that going to come back to the town, or is that...
No.
It's all good.
That's all part of the...
Okay.
So what decision points are we looking at going into the future? You said there was going to be various points for this board and/or the public to chime in.
Neil, if you look, excuse me, but if you look in your packet on page 10 dash 22...
Now you're going to make me look bad.
Yes. The appendix E is a draft aggregation plan timeline.
Oh, look at that.
And, yes, Maria's done an excellent job setting this up. And so we're at, tonight, we're at 10.01, 10.02.
Wow, we're already at step 10.
We've already done 10 minutes, right. So now, we need to get down to 25, but you'll notice that the subcommittee's going to be doing some more work in reviewing the draft aggregation plan. Then the, we will have a revised aggregation plan once it's gone through, we've gone through some consultations with DOER, for review by the public between May 31st and June 7th. And then we, as the Board of Selectmen, will hold a public hearing on the aggregation plan on the 7th, and then submit a formal vote, have a formal vote on, a week later, on the 14th. So that's...
Wow, this is, this is fast. Wow, this is, this is fast.
And then we will, our plan will get submitted to the DPU by Good Energy, DPU will review it, et cetera, and then hopefully we'll have the bid awarded to the winning supplier in October. There'll be opt-out letters for the public in November. And, and one of the things that Good, we've heard about Good Energy is that they have a very, very robust education plan for residents in the communities, and that's a good thing. You know, we obviously want to provide as much information as we can. They will be sending letters, they will be having information online, there will be, you know, potential for some cable, information on cable, so, as well as some meetings with, with public. So you can see it all here until, we're hoping that on January 1st, we'll actually go into the plan.
So what if we work through the MAPC to go with other communities? Is that still, could it fit into this schedule?
Yes, yes, it does.
Okay.
So we're looking at.
As I say, I think, I mean, this subcommittee has been working pretty hard, we think we're pretty organized, but as I say, Maria's been a big help, and also, as you can tell, Nancy's been a huge help, too, because sometimes people appoint a subcommittee and just let it go. She's been attending our meetings and helping, helping us make sure we have the i's dotted and t's crossed in terms of making sure there's a selectmen's hearing and thinking about all those issues. So, so I really thank you as well, Selectman Heller.
Okay.
Yeah, I'm, I'm going to suggest to you guys that you want to contact Ruth Ann at the senior center and do a program there about all of this, because I think we have a lot of seniors in town, and they're the ones who are going to be kind of suspicious about, you know, what this is going to do to their pile bills and stuff. So I, I think that, you know, earlier rather than later, you might want to explain what's going on to them and what it might mean for, for them.
Okay, any other questions or comments from the board? Therefore, I'll move that we adopt the Climate Action Committee Subcommittee on Community Choice Aggregations Recommendation that the Board of Selectmen subscribes to the Metropolitan Area Planning Council's Aggregation Procurement Program and enter into an agreement with MAPC's selected energy broker, Good Energy. All those in favor, please say aye. Selectman Daley?
Aye.
Selectman Franco?
Aye.
Selectman Heller?
Aye.
Selectman Green?
Aye.
And the chair votes aye. Thank you very much, Mr. Loewy, and the rest of the subcommittee working on this. Selectman Heller, thank you so much.
And, and the contract will be signed pretty promptly, I assume, and I hate to be, great, thank you.
Tonight.
Tonight. Moving along, we now have a public hearing on approving, approving an increase in the parking meter rates as recommended by the Transportation Board, and we're only seven minutes behind schedule. Wow, we caught up. We were at, what, 20, 25 minutes later, so one point. We will be. It's a public hearing, but first, we're going to get a presentation. Soon as Mr. Corain is ready.
Soon as the, the laptop is ready.
Oh, you didn't register your software, Mr. Corain.
This is, this one's on my laptop. There we go. Awesome. Do you know how to, one of those versions to make it full screen?
The next one over to the left.
No, the menu's not here. Sorry.
Your software.
View.
It's not my software.
Underview.
Yeah, yeah, I got, it wasn't up there, sorry, sorry.
Thank you so much. My name is Todd Graham, Transportation Administrator for the Town of Brookline, and I'm here to provide the final proposals that were approved by the Transportation Board relative to the parking meter system upgrade. They were approved by the Transportation Board on February 4th, 2016. They were publicly noticed, as is the enabling legislation for the Transportation Board has a, a 20-day appeal period and a 30-day, we call it cooling-off period before any action can be taken. We waited until then, and then now we're bringing it to the Board of Selectmen for their required vote of, to concur with the Transportation Board's vote in order to increase the parking meter rate. Here also is Pam Zelnick, who is the Vice Chair of the Transportation Board, in case there's any questions relative to the board. So I just want to briefly go over the starting point and how we got here. In August 2014, the Override Study Committee released their final report, although the members of the study committee differed on different proposals, one uniform proposal that they all supported and was mentioned throughout the report was the quote that broad support for increasing parking meter rates to $1.25 per hour. TAST's staff was then asked to follow up on that proposal and carry that through to the Transportation Board. In October 2014, the Brookline Chamber of Commerce sent a letter to the Transportation Board, this is previous leadership of the chamber, stating that "In anticipation of the impact, impactful decisions that will be made over the coming months related to the Override Study Committee's recommendations, the Brookline business community is eager to begin a dialogue with the Transportation Board regarding several transportation-related issues and their implications for local businesses." They then came before the November 2014 meeting of the Transportation Board and asked to be a partner with the board from the beginning as the, the changes or the proposals were formulated for the parking meter rate increase. At the November 2014 board meeting, Transportation Board meeting, they asked staff to actually form a staff-appointed working group to work with merchants, to try to get a broad appeal for merchants, but stay within a workable group, to develop a series of proposals for the entire parking meter system, not just a single rate increase as the Override Study Committee had recommended, but to look at it system-wide and see how it can better service the merchants, their customers, and the users in general. Specifically, they asked myself and Cara Bruton to work from Economic Development to work together on this proposal. We put together a staff-appointed working group that included Dana Brigham, who's the owner of the Brookline Booksmith in Coolidge Corner, Cliff Brown, who's a member of the Brookline Chamber of Commerce and the Advisory Committee, Damian Darling, who is the owner of the Abbey Restaurant in Washington Square, Ben Kelly, who was from the Boston School of Boalbaum over here in Brookline Village, and Scott Englander from the Transportation Board. So as you can see, we had a mix of three different commercial districts, our three largest commercial districts. We had a representative from the retail, from the hospitality, as well as the service industries. We also had, of course, Scott Englander, who's a Transportation Board member and former board member from Livable Streets, who's very active in transportation policy. Support staff included Cara Bruton and Andy Martinow from Economic Development, Sergeant Mike Murphy from the Brookline Police Department's Traffic Division, and myself. We met five or six times over a four-month period to discuss parking meter rates. After several of these meetings, the group discussed variable rates, meter technology, time limits, no time limits, hours of operation, et cetera. The group unanimously agreed that ultimately the town should be implementing the needed technology in order to pursue a variable rate structure based on demand, which would allow staff to increase or decrease parking meter rates to achieve the desired occupancy rate, and do congestion pricing, variable pricing based on time of day, day of the week, week of the month, et cetera, and allow staff to, to, to alter those rates based on the actual demand and not just have a stagnant rate. Similar to a lot of the theories of high cost of free parking that's been studied and done in San Francisco and other larger communities. However, in advance of that, because that requires a large investment in technology in order to monitor every single parking meter space, occupancy rates for the spaces, et cetera, the staff-appointed working group made the following recommendations through me to the Transportation Board, which the board adopted. These are under Transportation Board authority under their enabling legislation because they do not include any fees or rates. The first was to extend all parking meter hours of operations to a uniform 8:00 p.m. end time. As you may remember, during the 2010 increase, we did some meters to the extended 8:00 p.m. time and some to the 6:00 p.m. time. The merchants preferred a uniform 8:00 p.m. end time. There was one merchant who actually wanted us to carry it up to 10:00 p.m. in some commercial districts to cause the constant turnover. However, the other merchants weren't willing to go that far, so we settled on an 8:00 p.m. uniform start time, end time available, so customers are not confused in terms of some going to 6, some going to 8, some going to 10. They'll all go to 8 now. They recommended, the one exception is the town hall lot and the school street lot. For there, they wanted the hours of operations to be from 8:00 a.m. to 6:00 p.m. as they are now, Monday through Thursday, and then 8:00 a.m. to 8:00 p.m. Friday and Saturday. This was to accommodate public participation in evening meetings within town government. They didn't want the general public or the board members or commission members to have to pay a parking meter in order to participate in, in serve the town. The third recommendation the Transportation Board adopted was extending the Senate Street East and Fuller Street Lot time, time limit extended to eight, four hours, to accommodate those seeking longer stays within the commercial district. This is one of the specific requests from the Coolidge Corner Theater at the, specifically at the Senate Street East Lot. What they wanted was their patrons to be able to, to grab a bite to eat, as well as to see a movie and not have to run out during intermission to feed a meter. So the four-hour extended time will allow them to accomplish that. The fourth was the Coolidge Corner median time limit extended to three hours to accommodate those seeking longer stays within the commercial district. Right now, curbside is all two hours within townwide, and the median is also two hours. They were seeking that extra hour for those customers, again, that want to grab a bite to eat and then go shopping to longer stay. The fifth recommendation was the school street lot reduced to three hours, as all our other commercial lots, to encourage more use for commercial customers and discourage long-term parking by employees of local businesses. Right now, it's a five-hour lot, and often what you see are the same cars parked there every day. People run out halfway through the day, feed the meter to the rest of the five hours, and then go about their business, and the merchants are always complaining in that area that there's no available parking for their customers. The next recommendation was to make all long-term parking meters a uniform 13-hour time limit from 7:00 a.m. to 8:00 p.m. Right now, there are 11 or 13-hour, again, this is, these are long-term spaces that are set aside for those, for employees of Brookline businesses that come, they pay a reduced rate, or somewhere along the MBTA tracks, people come, they park, they pay, and then they take the train into Boston instead of parking on a residential street or taking a space in the commercial district. The seventh and final recommendation that was not related to financial is to make all curbside and median spaces in the Brookline Village, JFK Crossing, Washington Square, St. Mary's, and other medated areas outside of Coolidge Corner a three-hour time limit to accommodate the need for longer stays by customers. These areas don't have, typically don't have large parking lots, such as the Senate Street East or the Fuller Street Lot, where you can get the long-term stay.
So just to be clear, these are, these operational changes are not before this board?
Correct.
They've been adopted, and they will go into effect July 1? Are we looking at?
Yeah, they'll go into effect July 1 as well.
Okay.
Yeah, I wanted to make sure that the Board of Selectmen, as well as other people, knew that it wasn't just the rates, it was a whole series of changes that the merchants and the Transportation Board worked together to accomplish, to, to make the system more responsive to their needs. The next recommendation involves technology. The staff-appointed working group and the, urged the Transportation Board, which agreed, for the continued implementation of the smart meters and other new technologies making it easier to, for customers to pay, easier for the town to manage, and provide the higher level of data and access needed to, to move forward toward a more complete management of our public parking supply. So that's moving towards the variable pricing and the type of parking structure that they want, the more, the more managed public parking supply. The first one is to recommend that the Transportation Board request that the Selectmen immediately implement a pay-by-cell technology to allow payment by phone or web for all parking meters, including quote-unquote dumb P O M meters, the IPS single-space credit card meters, and the digital multi-space meters, although this board is aware, members of the public might not be, that this is completed. The Board of Selectmen approved the contract with Passport Parking two meetings ago using the MAPC regional bid, and the rollout is expected in summer 2016. Again, as part of this entire rollout, we'll be working with Passport Parking to roll out that app townwide. This will actually be a regional system. This is the same company that developed the Park Boston app and is expanding into Cambridge, Newton-Salem, Springfield, and a host of other communities within eastern Massachusetts. So you'll be able to use one app in all of these communities. And what that means is, for the Park Boston app specifically, there's already 60,000 users of the Park Boston app as of two months ago when we met with Passport. So they will be able to use their Park Boston app here, or you'll be able to use your, your regular Passport app in Park, in Boston as well, to pay. So it's one app satisfies all users.
Yeah, there was an article in this week's Globe about the success of the pay-by-cell and how it's, seems to have reduced the parking tickets but increased the compliance, so they're kind of netting out the revenue.
Yeah, there was a, yeah, there was a combination, Boston just went IPS citywide. They said it would be a six-month rollout, it took them two months, that that's what they're known for doing. They sort of overestimate how long it will take, and then they say, hey, we finished it in two months. So all of their single-space parking meters are now IPS meters. And it was the IPS meters combined with the pay-by-cell that resulted in that. So we have the, the pay-by-cell, which is completed, and staff is working with the company to implement. The second recommendation from, is to recommend that the Transportation Board request that the Department of Public Works enter CIP item for the replacement of the remaining 1,300 P O M meters with IPS single-space credit card meters. Again, the status is complete, pending town meeting approval for the first year in FY 2017. This will be a five-year, $805,000 rollout. It's scheduled for one quarter in FY 17, one quarter in FY 18, one quarter in FY 20, and then the remaining in FY 21. It's divided up over five years, but we're going to skip a year based on the CIP funding. So we'll have, will be completed in five years for this rollout. So now to sort of get to what's before the Board of Selectmen and what's before the public hearing, this is the existing parking meter rate. To give you an idea of where the parking meters are located and their existing rates, the green are the long-term meters that are right now 50 cents per hour. The red are long-term meters that are right now 75 cents per hour. The sort of purplish is the $1 per hour, that's your two, three, and five-hour meters. And then the dark blue is $1.50 per hour. Those are your long-term meters along Brookline Avenue, Chapel Street, and the Longwood MBTA stop. That's heavily used by employees from the LMA. The first change that's proposed is a proposed change rate for the two, the 3A and the five-hour meters. And I wanted to just put a history on here, so people know the sort of incremental changes that we've made over the past 10 years now. Pre-2007, all of these meters were $50, sorry, 50 cents per hour. In 2007, we did a rate change to 75 cents per hour. In 2010, we didn't, the, what is the existing rate change, which is a dollar per hour that they are right now. In the proposed rate... In the proposed rate under this plan is a dollar twenty-five per hour in 2016. So you can see we've gone from fifty cents to a dollar twenty-five in the ten-year period, sort of an incremental increase. The next proposed change is for the quote-unquote three B. hour meters, and these are the Coolidge Corner median, the Marion, the Charles. Again, these were fifty cents per hour pre-2007. Two thousand and seven, they were seventy-five cents per hour. They're existing right now at one dollar per hour. Their proposed rate is a dollar twenty per, a dollar twenty-five per hour for hours one and two. For those people wanting to stay that third hour, this is where the Transportation Board, as well as the merchants, wanted to start doing variable parking once the technology exists in this one area. For the third hour, you'd pay two dollars and fifty cents for that third hour. So if you're a regular customer using for the two-hour period, you'll just pay the normal rate. But if you're going to extend to a third hour, then you pay that higher rate for that extra hour. And it's only in that, only in the median area. It's not curbside where the rate and where the hour limit is the normal two hours. And again, the reason why the elevated rate, sorry, to go back, the reason why the elevated rate is there is if somebody needs to use it, they can use it. However, we don't want to encourage people to be parking there all day, or employees to be feeding the meter, taking away those spots from customers. The next proposed rate change is for the four-hour meters, which is the Senate Street East Lot and the Fuller Street Lot. Pre-2007, these were fifty cents per hour. Two thousand and seven, they got increased to seventy-five cents per hour. The existing one dollar per hour came in 2010. The proposed rate here, similar to the median, will be a dollar twenty-five per hour for hours one, two, and three. For the fourth hour, you'd pay two dollars per hour for that fourth hour. Again, this is for those who need it, it's available. However, we don't want to encourage people to park all day to feed a meter. The next is the proposed rate for the thirteen A. hour meters. You'll see that there's two here. There's the green, which is the fifty cents currently, and the red, which are seventy-five cents. The red were changed in 2013 when the park card system went out of business. We looked at the small number of areas where the park card was heavily used. These areas were used actually as part of either those commuters or Brookline Village employees have a permit program, and they were using the park card as a way, instead of filling all day with the quarters or nickels or dimes all the way up, you know, ten-hour rate, they were using the park card. When the park card went out, they were left with no alternative payment system than the quarter. So what we did at that time is we raised the rate in those small areas, brought them up to the seventy-five cents per hour, and we purchased the I. P. S. meters. So these areas already have I. P. S. meters, the red. The green, right now, is still the fifty cents per hour. Based on usage, they were not, at the time, worth bringing up with the I. P. S. meters to cover the cost. So what is the proposed rate is to bring all of these up to the seventy-five cents per hour rate. So there'll be a uniform seventy-five cents per hour.
Now, are those generally commuter, or are they employee? Like, the red, I would think, would be more employee.
Yeah, so the red in Brookline Village is employee. That's the Brookline Village Commercial Permit Parking Program, where they pay twenty-five dollars for a permit, they have to work in one of the Brookline Village businesses, and it gives them to write, the right to pay, park at that meter and pay the lesser meter rate, but park all day. The green are commuter meters. They are along the sea line. People pull in, they'll pay, and they'll either take the sea line in, or we encourage employees who do not buy into the commercial permit parking program on street, either because of cost or because they're not available in some locations, to actually park here and then take the train for that last sort of quarter-mile, or if it's close, if they work in the Washington Square area, then to walk to their businesses. The next proposed rate change is for the thirteen B. hour meters. These are the long-term meters that exist along Brookline Avenue, Chapel Street, and Longwood MBTA. In pre-2007, these are twenty-five cents per hour. In 2007, they were brought up to seventy-five cents per hour. In 2010, they were brought up to a dollar an hour. In 2012, again, as part of the park card going away, they were brought up to a dollar fifty an hour, and I. P. S. meters were placed in those locations. These meters are at capacity. They are heavily used. They are in high demand because the L. M. A., they are heavily used by L. M. A. employees who park here all day and then walk to the L. M. A. They're in sort of the outskirts areas where they really don't service anybody but them. So they provide a large revenue for the town, and the reason why they're filled every day is because even at the elevated rate from the rest of our meters, it's still cheaper than parking in a garage in the L. M. A. all day. So the proposed rate is actually to go up to two dollars per hour at these meters. So just to summarize, this is the motion that is, or the requested motion from the Transportation Board that's before you. It's a motion to accept the altering of Article Five, Section twelve D. of the Traffic Rules and Regulations for the Town of Brookline, as approved by the Transportation Board on February fourth, two thousand and sixteen, by replacing the existing language with the proposed. And these are the time limits and the zone rate that I just reviewed with each zone. So that's the issue that's before the Board of Selectmen. It is also covered in a memo that I had provided in April, I believe on April fifth. It went over the similar background and then what's before you.
Okay, any questions, comments from the Board? Selectmen, hello.
I'd like to understand how, a little bit about how the pay-by-cell technology will work for the person who's parking their car. I'm curious, are you allowed, if you, say you go to a meter in Coolidge Corner Lot, for instance, and you put in, you know, your two hours, and then you decide you really need, you're shopping, you know, someplace, and you need another hour, do you need to walk back to your car and be at, or can you do it?
You can, you can do it via the app, provided you remembered what meter space you parked at. So the meter app works with respect to, you enter in your space number, and then you add time.
Okay. So it's space, so, in other words, you couldn't, in other words, keep renewing?
Correct. You can build into the system, not allowing somebody to renew past the maximum time of that space where they're parked.
Right. So the space number then becomes critical.
Yeah. Yeah, all of our, one of the benefits that we have in Brookline is that all of our metered spaces are individual. There's no overlap. Some communities have the same meter numbers in this lot compared to another lot. So they have to create all these different zones. So you'd have to remember you're in zone one and meter five, or you might be in zone five at meter five. So with us, you're going to have one zone for townwide because none of our numbers overlap. So it's actually going to be easier to use the app in Brookline than it is in some other communities.
Okay, thank you.
So, and the differential in the pricing will be built into the app? So the app will know that you're at a dollar twenty-five meter versus a two-dollar meter?
Yep, and it'll also know that if you're at one of the meters, that if you purchase that third hour, it's the increased rate. It'll know that as well. And it will actually tell you that as you go to increase to the third hour.
Selectmen, Franco.
I have two questions, which at least in my mind are related, but I'll leave it to everybody else to decide if they're totally disparate. In your presentation, you didn't talk about game day rates, and I want to make sure that those are sticking around.
Yeah, absolutely. So you'll see in the bottom there, the game day rates are the same as they are now, except the first hour changes from a dollar twenty-five, and then the second hour goes to two fifty. So the game day stays at as it is today. It's for, for those that don't know, on Red Sox home games, we have a game day rate that allows those who are going to Red Sox games to park in these identified locations to pay an elevated rate. So we're already doing that variable pricing where they can buy what's called the game day rate for twenty, right now it's for twenty dollars. When the rate change goes in, it'll be for twenty-two fifty. And that allows them to park throughout the entire game up until eleven P. M. that night. And what we also do is those are along the median. Along the curbside, we extend those meters to ten P. M. as well, but we stay with the two-hour. So you can't park there, pay, and then go to a Red Sox game without getting a ticket. And the reason why we did that is this was one of the things we worked with the merchants at that time, where they were always complaining that somebody would park there, go to the game, and a customer wanting to go to a local restaurant could never find a space. Well, now they're actually finding spaces to go to because they're not risking that ticket.
And the game day rate came about because we did the calculation that it was cheaper to charge for the consumer, the parker, to pay twenty-two fifty to park in Brookline than it was to park in a lot closer to Fenway Park for forty, fifty, sixty dollars.
And it's also just slightly cheaper than getting a parking ticket for violating the two-hour rule if you parked on Ivy Street, let's say, for thirty dollars. So it gives them the incentive to park there instead of in the neighborhood or at one of those two-hour meters.
Which leads me to my second question about the thirteen B. meters, particularly those along Brookline Avenue. If we are saying it's cheaper to park in Brookline than to buy a garage space in the L. M. A., why are we only going up to two dollars? Why aren't we getting closer to that market rate in the L. M. A. for a garage?
Well, this now brings us closer. This now brings us to about twenty dollars for a ten-hour stay, which is the average that we're seeing people stay. So it is bringing us closer, I think, as we, you know, sort of, you know, get the data and start analyzing this, I think you'll actually see this, ours coming back, provided the Board is favorable on this, and sort of inching this one up in that sort of incremental rate in order to sort of, you know, level out the demand with the, with the pricing.
It seems to me, too, we're going to want to be just a tad lower than the L. M. A. lots, just to provide some kind of incentive.
I mean, I was under the impression that the L. M. A. lots cost more, but I know Mr. Crane has probably taken a close look at this, so I respect his.
They, they're, they have employee lots in the L. M. A., plus they have also employee satellite lots, where then they take the L. M. A. shuttle in for free. And then they have the garages directly in the L. M. A. that are using more for customers. And those are certainly, you know, thirty to forty dollars if you try to park there all day. So again, this is sort of, it's now going to be twenty dollars a day, so we're sort of testing the waters, saying, okay, I don't want to make everyone go away and sort of have all that revenue drop off. But it's something that we definitely, that we definitely monitor.
Selectmen, Daly.
Yeah, I have, I actually was happy that we were able to, you know, to get going with the pay-by-your-cellphone thing. And I actually approve of extending the meter hours to a uniform eight P. M. end time. And I have no problem with the, you know, jacking up the rates on game days near Fenway Park, but I do have a problem with some of the rest of the dynamic pricing concept. Because I think that, you know, I try to shop locally, but I want to know, you know, I don't want to get to Coolidge Corner, search for a parking space, and only to discover that it's double what it usually is because for some reason you've decided this is a peak time or something like that. I mean, it's almost as close for me to drive out to Chestnut Hill and park for free and go to the stores out there. So I think that, you know, I think, this is why I like actually the uniform eight P. M. end time is, because right now, I know, my husband and I, when we go to the restaurant, we're saying, is this, is this where we're supposed to put in more money until eight or not? And you kind of have this big debate. I think people don't like that kind of uncertainty and just knowing, yeah, you just have to put the money in until eight o'clock unless you're down in the Red Sox zone. It is, you know, I think people like some of that certainty. I am not really in favor of the more dynamic model where things are constantly changing. And, you know, it's really not going to, you know, just as someone who wants to go and do some errands or do a little bit of shopping, it's not going to be worth it for me to go struggle to find a parking space and then discover that, you know, that there's something, you know, wildly different from what I expect on that parking meter. And how do you even know? I mean, one of the problems now is, you know, you don't, sometimes if it's dark or something, it's hard to read that what the end time is on the parking meter, that, you know, I think that people, you know, this, this kind of dynamic pricing concept where things might change constantly anywhere is going to be, you know, certainly, I would say, I would think twice about going to Coolidge Corner.
The good news is that's not before us, the dynamic pricing.
Well, it's the direction the Board is heading in, and I want to express on the record, I'm not in favor of it.
And before they, and before they implement that or try to implement it, they have to come before us, since we, we have the final say.
Yeah, I mean, one of the, one of the benefits, you know, we're rolling out the technology over five years, so we couldn't even start this process unless it's on a small pilot program for five years. So that gives the community time to discuss the issue, debate the issue, and decide where it wants to go. The one good thing with respect to the I. P. S. meters, as well as the digital multi-space meters, is that the screens are lit, so you can actually see the pricing on there at night. So that's one of the benefits now, instead of going to the old P. O. Ms. where you have to look at the sticker, and it might be nighttime where you can't see it. If you're in I. P. S., it's lit, so it actually tells you how much it is. So that's one of the benefits of going forward with the I. P. S. meters, separate of variable pricing or anything along that lines.
This is a public hearing. If anyone wants to speak to this proposal, come on up and introduce yourself.
Again, I'm Rick Sturboz. I have actually planned, very well thought out, I have two questions. One is, what's the net revenue to Brookline this year over, what do you estimate? What does that represent?
So the deputy town administrator had done an estimation, and I believe it was approximately seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars extra revenue on an annual basis.
Eight sixty was the working number, yeah.
The working number is eight sixty on an annual basis.
But did that, but that, did that include extending out the times to eight o'clock throughout the town?
That included the eight P. M. extended time. It did not include the fourth hour within the Coolidge Corner Lot or the third hour within the median. Because that's an unknown right now.
And that's not net of any of the expenses that were occurring to, to transfer meters and upgrade meter technology.
Yeah, I'll be very interested to see what kind of additional revenue that bump-up yields.
We'll be looking at closely similar to what we do with the game day each, after each game, we download, you know, how much did we get extra per game?
What do those numbers look like? On average?
On average, there's about thirty customers on average per game that purchased the full game day rate. So that's pretty good.
My second question has to do with, has there been an increase or decrease in parking meters this year? What's the impact on this?
In the number of parking meters? We're not adding. It's the same number of parking meters. We're not proposing any new parking meter locations.
Or fewer parking meters?
Or any fewer parking meter locations.
I'd like to make a personal comment.
Sure.
I've used the system extensively in New York City. It works very, very well, has its quirks, and I think it will collect more money this way, because if I'm going to spend three more dollars right now, as opposed to walking four blocks and putting in a meter, it's a no-brainer.
Yeah, and that was the point of the Globe article over this weekend. And I've seen it work in D. C. where I used to travel a lot, and I think, I think it's great. I think we should have done it years ago, that's my. Yes, sir?
Hi, my name's Josh Benedict, and I live on Hamilton Road. I had a couple of comments, one of which is that in Boston, when they implemented the Park Boston system, they put signs up all over the place. And I'd be interested to know if there's been any thought about the effect on the streetscape from having all these signs which, which will tell you the zone numbers and things like that. And then the second thing is I noticed that there will be a fee for using the app but not for inserting a credit card. And I imagine that's going to push a lot of people toward not using the app unless they really want that convenience of seeing the timer on their phone. And I was wondering if there was, perhaps in future years, this is probably pretty set at this point. set at this point, but maybe thinking about equalizing that payment, making the app a little less and the usage of the meter a little higher. So, thank you.
Yeah, and that actually is one of my little pet things about credit card fees that the town has been eating, the credit card fees, to the point where, you know, it's costing us a lot of money. So I think generally that we need to be selectively getting away from that.
I would say that our focus up to this point has been money, but I think your point about sort of the marketing of the different kind of meters and testing, you know, how differential fee structure is an important point. I think our direction is to begin charging for the convenience fee for credit cards. Does Boston charge for the credit cards in the meters?
No, they do not charge for credit cards in the meters. They do charge for the app because that's the fee that Passport has within the app fee for convenience of using their app. They don't charge, they get, because of the size of the community, they have one credit card vendor that does all their credit card charges. Because of that, they're able to use that power to negotiate their rates very low compared to any other community. But as of right now, for parking meters, there's no other community in, at least the greater Boston area, that's adding on a convenience fee at this point. Everyone's talking about it. We're sort of, you know, I go to the Parking Clerks of Massachusetts meeting, we all sit around and we talk about it, and we're sort of waiting for another community to jump, you know, to sort of take that leap first. It's something that we've discussed internally, you know, throughout the years, and it sounds like the board is providing that direction.
Well, that's me. I don't know if my colleagues agree.
Yeah, I don't.
How about the signage?
Yep, so one of the reasons why Boston had to go with so much signage was because of they have those different zones. One of the also reasons why is because they're not doing theirs by, you have to enter your zone, and then you have to enter your license plate of your vehicle. So their enforcement is based on license plate-based. So we'll have stickers on all of our meters. You'll have some signs in the parking lots, but you won't have them throughout all the different streets like you do in Boston.
How are we, is there going to be any signage regarding pay-by-cell beyond the little sticker on the meter?
No, there are stickers on the meters. And then there's, in the lots, you'll have signs saying you can pay by cell. But mostly, it's going to be stickers on the meters.
Any other public comment? Any other questions, comments from the board? I see none. Are we ready for a motion? Can you put the motion up, Mr. Corrine?
Yep.
I don't have to read this whole thing.
No, no, you might want to refer to it.
Right, well, yes.
But I referred to another page number and a date. All that stuff.
Okay, so I will move that we accept the altering of Article 5, Section 12D of the traffic rules and regulations for the town of Brookline as approved by the Transportation Board on February 4th by replacing the existing language with the proposed. And it is referenced, I'm going to refer to the page number in our packet, which is Page 11-2, which duplicates the rates you see on the screen. All those in favor of the motion? Selectman Daley?
Aye.
Selectman Franco?
Aye.
Selectman Heller?
Aye.
Selectman Green?
Aye.
And the chair votes aye. And this goes into effect when?
I believe the start date would be July 1. Obviously, DPW has to mobilize to program the POM meters. One of the benefits of the IPS and the digital is I can do it from my computer. The POM, the 1300 that are still out there, all have to be touched and reprogrammed. They would have to put on the stickers for them as well. So July 1 is our start date.
So some of those meters, folks may get a reprieve for a day or two.
Yes.
Thank you, Mr. Corrine.
Thank you very much.
The next item is warrant articles, and there are two warrant articles proposed for reconsideration. And these are Articles 15 and 16 related to the Carlton Street footbridge easements. And I'm told that these are just technical corrections. Is anyone here to speak to that, Mr. Ditto?
Do you want me to just give a quick overview of what this is all about?
Yeah, please. Tell us what we're doing.
All right. As part of the reconstruction of the Carlton Street footbridge, where there's federal money and state money, federal money being 80% and state 20%, that they're requiring certain guarantees on the land that this project will move forward. So we have two sets of easements, one strictly with town-owned land, and we'll be looking to take a temporary easement.
Right, but we already voted these.
You voted these last time around.
Right, so what's different? Why do we need to reconsider?
I don't know. I don't know.
Let's see, I had a, you asked that question earlier today. I thought it was very minor language. I don't recall. I can.
I see with 16, it's correcting a typo, changing the word "with" to the word "will." So that seems pretty benign. And I don't see anything on 15 here.
I'm sorry, I don't have that material. Austin, do you recall?
So it seems to me if...
It looks like both are changing "will" to "with," or "with" to "will."
Where are you finding 15?
12-4 and 12-8. 12-4 is 15.
Oh, yeah, okay.
Yeah.
That's, both of these seem pretty benign.
I think I heard through the grapevine that the chair of the advisory committee also was a little concerned about the structure of the 15 motion and thought that it read a little funny, so made some tweaks to sort of clarify the structure and be more straightforward.
Yeah, I think that's right. Let me just, I can, according to Ms. Goff, she indicated that chairman of the advisory committee thought it looked like two motions under one article and asked the moderator to approve language that he felt simplified the vote. So I think that's the nature.
So we don't have the revised language in 15 before us?
Right here, right?
12-2.
The advisory committee voted the following one.
12-2. Oh, okay, okay, okay. Got it. Okay.
12-6 is the...
Got it. That's the problem when we have, is the chair of the advisory committee, the editor of a magazine.
An academic journal.
Academic journal. If you heard me call it a magazine.
This is not Newsweek.
Yeah.
So if you look on page 12-4, it's at the bottom, there was a motion that was made that corrected the prior motion, I believe, in it, just to replace, move that the town will in both paragraphs.
I think that 12-2 is the whole...
And that's the updated, and that's the updated one. If that's the case, why don't we just move to...
We've got a memo saying the advisory committee approved that language.
Okay, so I'll move that we reconsider Article 15. All those in favor, please say aye. Selectman Daley?
Aye.
Selectman Franco?
Aye.
Selectman Heller?
Aye.
Selectman Green?
Aye.
And chair votes aye. And then I will move the advisory committee language on page 12-2, which, for the viewing audience, just makes some housekeeping changes, doesn't change the substance of what we voted a couple of weeks ago. All those in favor, please say aye. Selectman Daley?
Aye.
Selectman Franco?
Aye.
Selectman Heller?
Aye.
Selectman Green?
Aye.
And the chair votes aye. And then with respect to Article 16, we will move, I will, well, first I have to move reconsideration. The reason for the reconsideration is to make the grammatical change, changing the word.
"With" to "will."
"With" to "will." Or is it the language on 12-6? Is it the language on 12-6? So that's, okay.
Also, you can take out or add anything relative there, too.
Yeah, well, that's kind of what we normally do. So I am going to move the language on page 12-6, which...
We need a reconsideration first?
Yep, you're absolutely correct. I will move that we reconsider Article 16. All those in favor, please say aye. Selectman Daley?
Aye.
Selectman Franco?
Aye.
Selectman Heller?
Aye.
Selectman Green?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. I will move the advisory committee's language on page 12-6. All those in favor, please say aye. Selectman Daley?
Aye.
Selectman Franco?
Aye.
Selectman Heller?
Aye.
Selectman Green?
Aye.
And the chair votes aye. Okay, now, thank you, Mr. Ditto. Okay, I can, why don't we do Article, let's do Article 11. I see Mr. Murphy here. We'll just dispose of Article 11. I worked on a referral motion. A little background, the advisory committee voted a referral motion, and this is the tree warrant article.
Which page is that?
It's, it was, it just says 13, Article 11, and it's an email dated today at 4:02. The advisory committee voted a referral to the zoning bylaw committee. The zoning bylaw committee met last week, and that committee is kind of starting to be revived again. And the committee agreed that this tree bylaw was not proposed as a zoning bylaw, it was proposed as a general bylaw. And it could very well be that the place to do it is zoning, but it could also be the place to do it upon further study or do, accomplish what this is trying to accomplish is general bylaw. But it's kind of a broader skill set than just the zoning bylaw committee. So it was the sense of the zoning bylaw committee that we constitute an ad hoc committee for this purpose, where we would get some folks from the tree planting committee, the conservation.
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 Planning.
Right. And some other interested citizens.
Mr. Brady.
Right. And then it's proposed here to be a selectmen's committee, so we would be doing the appointment. So, right. So, so one of us, I guess, will, though, actually...
If town meeting agrees.
If town meeting agrees, yeah. Now, Ms. Banka, who was, is an advisory committee representative to the zoning bylaw committee, suggested that one of the reasons for referring it to the zoning bylaw committee was to ensure that that zoning bylaw committee is revived by giving it something to do.
Given the zoning bylaw committee's reluctance to take this on at your last meeting, I'm wondering what the advisory committee is planning on doing. I think it would be a shame if we have a floor fight over...
No, no, the feedback I got from Sean Lynn Jones is he would put this on the agenda for reconsideration. And I wouldn't expect a floor fight, at least I hope. You know, the point is to get a good committee to be looking at this. So, and I think we'll get a better committee if it's done in this way.
Okay, make your motion.
And I'm willing to make that case. So I'm going to move that we move a referral to a selectmen's committee in the language of the motion before us. All those in favor, please say aye. Selectman Daley?
Aye.
Selectman Franco?
Aye.
Selectman Heller?
Aye.
Selectman Green?
Aye.
And the chair votes aye. Okay, so are we, we're ready for the budget articles?
No.
Nope. So we should do...
Tobacco.
Tobacco? That's number 10.
And I assume the moderator approved of that language for Article 11?
Yes. The moderator, actually, I haven't heard back on the Article 10 language. I haven't heard back from the moderator yet, and I'm looking for my language.
I have one, I'm seeing the proposed motion on Article 10, which, who is proposing this motion?
I wrote it.
Okay.
Actually, no, I wrote 11. I didn't write this one. Actually, I did.
You're so busy, you don't know what you're doing.
So, sure, shoot.
There's some stuff you can take when your memory starts to go.
Thank you. Yeah, this one, the moderator has seen.
Some jellyfish.
I made this, suggested this language to the...
Okay, I have some concerns about this tobacco-free generation proposal as to whether it's even constitutional to have, to implement a law disparitely between two people who are adults or of age, but you say some of them...
Well, the committee can then flesh it out.
I think that's a good question for the committee. As an attorney, you seem uniquely qualified to chair the committee and answer that important constitutional question. So the moderator has approved of this one?
The moderator has.
Well, it does say it may include, but not necessarily limited to that concept, so, okay.
Any other questions, comments on...
The petitioner, I assume, has seen this.
Yes, the petitioner has seen this, yeah. And actually, the chair of the advisory subcommittee did a little wordsmithing, too. So this has kind of gone through a little bit of a, whatever.
So bottom line, everybody is...
Yeah, until somebody...
Nobody's raised their hand.
Right, nobody's raised their hand yet. So I will move the referral motion to a selectmen's committee in the language of the proposed motion before us. And the committee will examine the impact and feasibility of stronger anti-tobacco measures. All those in favor, please say aye. Selectman Daley?
Aye.
Selectman Franco?
Aye.
Selectman Heller?
Aye.
Selectman Green?
Aye.
And chair votes aye. Why don't we talk about Ernst Sic...
Yes. So last week, the petitioners at the public hearing indicated that they were, had received a anonymous suggestion that the town was not, had not effectively implemented the policy, and that was... and that was a surprise to me. I did ask Sandra DeBeau to prepare some documentation about the implementation, and I think we feel comfortable that it's been fully implemented, although there is the glitch on the payroll system, but there's no requirement for that. Sandra is here to talk about that if you have questions. In terms of the more substantive debate, I mean, this was the same article that was put on last year, so I did include in your packet this evening, you know, our report that supported the Board's vote of no action last year. But if you have questions about the implementation, at least on the town's side, Sandra is here to talk about that.
Well, I, you know, one of their comments was that, you know, if we implemented the state law, they would have someplace to bring their concerns if they were being cheated out of their sick time. But, you know, I think if anyone, all anyone has to do is bring their concerns to Mr. DeBeau's office, and you would look into it and see that sick leave is being properly implemented, right?
There is a formal, you know, grievance procedure in the, in the classification paper for non-unioned people, personnel.
That is correct.
See, even if somebody, you know, I mean, that anonymous letter didn't even say what department it was, even if they wanted to be somewhat anonymous, but would at least identify the department, it's something the town would take up. I mean, I don't, I have confidence that the town will address any issues if there are problems with implementation.
We also don't know if that employee was a school employee.
Right. And I think, I think we don't know whether the schools have implemented this or not.
Do we know if the schools have implemented?
They intend to, but I believe to date they have not.
I was just at the Personnel Subcommittee of the Advisory Committee. The school was there. I believe they're taking up a vote in the next week or two.
Selectman Heller.
So one of the questions that was raised by the petitioners, or one of the issues that was raised, was that the, this glitch of not getting the information on the pay stub? And so I'm wondering, is there a way that you have developed, or can you develop a way to give each employee, some who fall into these categories of not being able to get the information on the pay stub, some additional information, piece of paper, whatever, saying what it is that they have earned, and so that they would know?
So.
You have to keep track of it somehow, right?
That's correct.
Yeah.
And up until this week, when we unfortunately had to be more focused on the Affordable Care Act, you know, because that had a very definitive deadline that impacted a lot of our employees, until this week, the accrual system hadn't been worked out fully. It still continues to be an issue, and I can go into detail if you want, but it has basically to do with recreation, two things. The recreation employees who hold multiple positions, but you can only attach it to one accrual. If you attach it to the various positions, they're going to be getting, you know, three times quadruple what they should be accruing. So that's one issue that we have. And the other issue is that if these individuals who are on fluctuating schedules aren't working under the system, they're still going to accrue time when they shouldn't be. So this is, it is by no means elegant. We're going to have to work around it. But all of the payroll clerks are aware that this applies to the employees, and they will be, they now can go in and look up the banks. I mean, we can do regular reports, probably. I would not want to encourage that right away, because we have to make sure that this system is working appropriately. And I'm going to give it about six months. But, I mean, the simple question is, we have to do it manually. That's the simple question.
Yeah, but I think, I think if I'm hearing Selectman Heller, what she's saying is like, could you, once a year, say, just send out a letter to some of these people and say, if you work X number of hours, you should get X amount of sick time? And then, you know.
Oh, well, they have this information. I mean, the information is in the policy.
No, no, my question is different. My question, my, my issue is, you know, if you had it on a pay stub, you'd know what it is you had. And what I'm asking is, how will they know what it is they have if they don't get it on their pay stub?
So the very simple answer at this point is it's going to have to be calculated, it's going to have to be done manually, and the department heads and the payroll clerks are going to have to give it to the individuals.
Like the old days, before.
Like the old days.
But we can commit to doing that, I presume.
Absolutely.
That's all I want. I mean, I just, I feel that it's good notice to people of how, what they have, and what, they can, you know, understand it, and that's all I want, just some documentation.
But it's possible, as we're trying to work this out, that there, that anonymous letter could have been from somebody who worked for Parks and Recreation, or Recreation, I guess it is. Is it possible?
I would not, I would not want to speculate.
Okay. But I mean, right now, if you were one of these people who had several different jobs with Recreation, you might have trouble finding out at this, at this point in time, what sick leave you were entitled to. Because we haven't got this, the glitches worked out, is that what?
We don't have the glitches worked out electronically. But the policy has been up and running since October, people could use it in January. The department heads and their payroll clerks know about this and how it's calculated, how it accrues, how it applies. All right? So it has to be done manually. They cannot go in and, they could not go in and create a report automatically, because the accrual systems in Munis, I'm not convinced, are accurate yet. And it is, whether we will be able to work this out, and whether we have to do a completely manual system remains to be seen. But we can do a better job of telling the employees, telling the payroll clerks that they need to tell the employees. But the employees should also have the policy and have some understanding. Every year, we will be doing a look back to see if people should be put on a different accrual table. We can certainly put letters out to them once a year, but, you know, they should be able to see it. The other thing is, we have employee self-service that is slowly being rolled out as well, and I would think at some point that these employees would be able to go on and see their own. Now, whether we have the license to deal with all these part-time employees with fluctuating schedules, I don't know. But, I mean, this is not an easy group to administer. It's an important benefit, and like I said, we might have to do it manually. But the commitment is there, and we're working on it diligently.
The one thing I would say is, you know, this anonymous complaint, it may have been portrayed that somehow we're upset with people who want to take advantage of this benefit. That's not the case at all.
Absolutely not.
We're very comfortable with.
That might have been, you say it got implemented in January. This might have been somebody that tried to get their sick time prior to January, maybe.
We just don't know. But perhaps one of the things you could do is notify, give employees the name and phone number of somebody in the payroll department to call to get the information if you haven't put it on, if you're not able to put it on the pay stub. At least we should have the information, correct?
That would be the departmental level.
That would be either the payroll clerk in their department or HR.
Okay.
Okay. Yeah, question, by all means.
The issue of the ability to go to the Attorney General to see enforcement of violations came up, and it's an issue that I think a lot of people view as an important aspect of the state law that, of course, we don't have. How would you respond to that concern?
As was referenced earlier, we have a grievance process that falls under the contract, and that's how I think that they would respond, or seek an appeal of the issue they may have.
Can I ask a question about that? What would be the timeline of our grievance procedure as opposed to a complaint to the Attorney General's office? Do you know the answer to how?
I would have to look at the law. I would assume that our grievance procedure is much faster, yeah.
Is there any argument that's not as effective as the Attorney General's process? I doubt it, because the Attorney General is more effective, but, I mean, is there any argument that won't, anyone would make that?
I think you'd have to define effectiveness. I mean, if you're talking about fining the town.
I'm trying to anticipate what's going to come up.
Well, you know, during this discussion last year that we had, Christine Westfall of the Advisory Committee made a very good point. She was also on the Personnel Subcommittee, in that this is a brand-new law, brand-new. So what's going to be raised, and what's going to be litigated, and what kind of oversight that the Attorney General's going to take, and the impact, and the fines? I just don't know. I haven't done that research, and I don't know if anybody knows yet. With regard to a remedy with the town, I mean, I think that the remedy would be, you know, making sure that the employee, like our unionized employees, get the remedy that they're looking for, which is to be made whole, I would think. If we're talking about assessing fines to the town for not following the law, that, you know, that would not be possible. If you're talking about bringing a suit because of some discrimination complaint, that would be under the M C A D. I mean, there's a whole litany of laws that could be underlying this.
But I think the point is, we've heard from Mr. DeBeau and Mr. Kleckner, that the town's committed to giving people their sick leave, and so, you know, the, you will work to expeditiously address any problems.
Yeah, and I want to, I want to remind you all that not only are we committed to the sick time, but we have committed personal time. And that personal time, you can almost guarantee that eight hours, once it's accrued, is going to be used, where sick leave is much more speculative. So I think we have a great commitment to this, and if someone has issues, we want to address them, just like we do with any other issues that come before us.
And one of the things that we raised last year was that adoption of the state law presents some operational difficulties for us. So we've got several departments who work in sort of shifts, the fire department being probably the best example, and allowing employees to take smaller increments of time off under the paid sick leave provisions would make it very difficult for the fire department to effectively carry out its job of fire suppression and making sure that fire safety is carried out in the most effective way in town.
And we see this on a regular basis in our DPW crews, because that, it actually comes up on a regular basis with that DPW. They go out and cruise, they work as crews, they take lunch as crews, and it would really be disruptive to the DPW on an immediate basis.
But, I mean, I think the other thing, too, is, you know, you're either a union shop or you're not, and we have, you know, honored our union contracts, spent hours and hours negotiating the union contracts over many years, and this would throw all of our union contracts into question. So I'm going to, I'll move no action on this warrant article.
Okay. All those in favor of Selectman Daley's motion, please say aye. Selectman Daley.
Aye.
Selectman Franco.
Aye.
Selectman Heller.
Aye.
Selectman Green.
Aye.
And Chair votes aye. We'll go to the St. Aden's plaque.
Yes.
This seems pretty benign. We're affirming that we agree that St. Aden's plaque was appropriately placed on a historic site. That seems pretty uncontroversial.
Has the Advisory Committee tweaked this language at all, or is there apt to do? I say lovingly as a former member of the Advisory Committee.
Not that I'm aware of. But I, if, if they do, I'll be more than happy to move reconsideration, so we don't have a floor fight on this one. So I will move favorable action on Article eighteen, as proposed by the amendment proposed by the petitioner. All those in favor, please say aye. Selectman Daley.
Aye.
Selectman Franco.
Aye.
Selectman Heller.
Aye.
Selectman Green.
Aye.
And the Chair votes aye. Mr. Kleckner, we're to the budget articles. How do you want to handle it?
Mr. Chairman, I just heard from Ms. Goff, who was down at the Advisory Committee. The Advisory Committee was taking up the budget this evening as well, and one of the major issues was whether to reconsider the DPW budget over, over some of the uncertainty about the solid waste, and they did not do so. So I think there probably is not a lot of problems, but I really would like Melissa to come up, because I'm not sure I can answer all the questions that you might have.
Do you have any idea how?
I think momentarily, I think within minutes.
So. So we'll take a five, hopefully, minute break?
Thank you.
How you doing?